Great. I'd like to welcome you to the trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. The date is October 10th, 2023. The time is seven o'clock. And Paula, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Page.
Here.
Trustee Cobb. All lawyer. Trustee Hilton Hinga.
Here.
Mr. Lucrezzi.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
And trustee Swisher.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. He's joining me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Trustees, you have an agenda before you. Please let me know if you have questions about it or items that should be added or deleted or changed. There are none, I would like a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Some move.
Second.
Lucrezzi and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And then you also have the consent agenda, which has minutes from various advisory groups and committees. And approval of the resolution that we passed for public service of Colorado. And also licensing for one of the marijuana shops. So is there anything that anyone would like to pull out of the consent agenda? To have a more discussion about it? Are you ready to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Lucrezzi and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Well, now we are at the point of public comment. Also, I'd like to ask you if you have a cell phone to please silence it. And with public comment, you have three minutes to speak to us about a topic that is important to you. So what I'd like to do when I call your name is to have you come to the podium and give your name and address. And then you will have three minutes to to deliver your message to us. The first person is Sarah Kuhn.
Hi, Sarah Kuhn, 115 South Gunnison Avenue in Buena Vista. Hi, everybody, I'm Sarah Kuhn. I'm a member of the Buena Vista Tree Advisory Board, and I spoke to you all a couple of weeks ago regarding Sangre's, Sangre de Cristo Electric Company's desire to cut a number of trees along their higher transmission lines here in town. I want to thank the Board of Trustees for the ordinance they passed recently, which requires permits to be issued to anyone wanting to remove trees on public right-of-way or a public place within the town of Buena Vista. We, as a tree board, have recently purchased tree platter inventory software that the Parks Department is using to map trees on public property in town. And they are concentrating initially on the trees that would be affected by Sangre's action along those higher transmission lines. What has come to light in this process is that less than 5% of the trees along these higher transmission lines that Sangre is proposing to cut are on public property. That means that 95% of the trees that would be affected by Sangre's action are on private property and therefore are not subject to permits by this new ordinance. This ordinance is a step, but it is a small step, and this causes us great concern. While we appreciate that the town has slowed down Sangre's process and we are asking and are asking for the initial plan for public property, the majority of trees are still at risk. I hope that this plan that Sangre comes up, that has Sangre has been tasked to present, gives a clear explanation of why this action is needed, that it is best practice, and that Sangre has a more long-term plan for their higher transmission lines. It remains in question what citizens can actually do to stop trees being cut on private property. We've been told that Sangre will send emails and flyers and that they will knock on doors. But as of yet, we are unaware of any way in which a private citizen can slow down or stop Sangre's action. We know there's a grievance process, but it seems that this only applies to the rates that are charged to a customer, the manner in which Sangre provides electric service, or the proposed changes to rates and regulations. This action seems to be out of the scope of Sangre's grievance process. And it remains in question what a private citizen can do to slow down Sangre's process on private property. We are wondering if there's anything more the board can do. Can the ordinance be amended to include the entire project, all of the trees? Can there be some sort of greater public notice by Sangre? I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know what the public process is in something like this, but I fear that citizens would have to fend for themselves tree by tree. And I want to be able to tell Buena Vista Relevance when they approach me what action they can take to protect their trees. As of right now, I have no answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
The next person on the list is Letitia Pryor. From the podium.
I also have my partner Nicole with me. Right, so my name is Letitia Pryor. I live in 449 East Arkansas.
I'm Nicole Stefan. I live at 3301 County Road 371. So we're here to talk about opening a makerspace. The name of our business is BV Made. A makerspace is an area where folks can come together and share tools. So we're envisioning a space that would offer community members woodworking and welding tools as well as an open space. And a few of the benefits of having a makerspace in a community are the economic development potential. So entrepreneurs, as they're getting up and running, could come into the space and do prototyping. Another thing is the potential for folks that are in need, businesses specifically that are in need of vocational training. They could talk to us, and we could potentially provide some options that would align with what their business needs are. Letitia's going to share a couple of other things about where we're at.
So another, we're going to be a nonprofit, so we're looking, we're hopefully getting a sponsorship agreement tomorrow. So we'll be a 501(c)(3), and we're all about dedicating ourselves to this community. How can we make it better? So we definitely want to hear from you guys. You know, different ways, we obviously want to, you know, even the high school people, like when they graduate, where can they go if they want to continue industrial arts? There's really no place unless they have their own money and their own residence. One of the hardest things we do have, and you guys all know this, is commercial space, right? So I think we're, I think we're close to getting a space that's kind of outside of town. What we'd be looking at, you know, we actually do have an anonymous donor that's given us quite a large sum of money to get us started with. And that's great, and we anticipate, you know, building our membership. We've done classes with the SBDC, so we have multiple revenue streams that we think we can have that will sustain us. Eventually, we really want to be here in town. And I think that's where maybe the town can help us, finding a space. Maybe, you know, again, if we can, and we're talking further on down the road, if we get some kind of funding, multiple grants, if we can get funding from our town, then we can get matching donations and grants at the state level. It just opens a few things up for us. So we're not asking for that now. We'll probably be okay getting started and with our membership. And I just want to prove how successful and how much of a demand there really is. So we're hoping this will help this, you know, our town and our community quite a bit. Just, you know, we have more than a few ideas to help different people in the community. Do you guys have any questions at all?
Well, we may not ask questions now. We are, we can, but we'll probably talk about this later in our trustee interaction at the end of our meeting.
Great. Yeah, just let us know. I have some handouts, some information, flyers, if that helps you guys.
That would be good. I'd like that.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for coming. So that concludes the public comment part of our meeting. So we're going to go now with staff reports, starting with the police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, I have a short one tonight. I'll just go quickly. We had a meeting with the school board recently, talking about the school resource officer program. That went really well. They had a lot of good questions about it. We also had our first principals' meeting, which we do once a month with each of the principals to hear how things are going. We got really good feedback on that, talking about issues related to school safety and things. Last week, we did coffee with a cop. So October 4th is usually National Coffee with a Cop Night. We did it the night before that, staffing things. Brown Dog hosted us. It was just open for about a couple hours. Citizens could come in and have a cup of coffee with the police. Several citizens participated in that. Some of them brought some concerns up that we're able to discuss. Some of them just wanted to meet their local officers. We had a lady bring her daughter to, you know, interact with the police and ask any questions she might have. So that went really well. Homecoming events this past weekend was very smooth. The homecoming parade on Friday. Then we had the bonfire after the games. No, sorry, after the parade, and then they had the Powderpuff game that night as well. And then the football game and the dance the next night went well. We had officers at all of those events as well. We had a meeting with the chiefs and sheriffs in the 11th Judicial District, and this was the first time BVPD was able to host it. Because of our new building, we haven't really had a space to do that before. So that was really nice. It's good, good for us to interact with some of those other entities. And I'll learn from them and vice versa and see some of the things they're dealing with and get some ideas on that. Upcoming events, we've got Halloween parade on Halloween. Truck or Treats coming up same day. And in the past, after the Halloween parade, the streets have been opened up. And this year, with the rec department, we decided we're just going to keep the East Main Street closed. So that's going to provide a little more safety as the kids go back and forth to businesses to get candy. Tomorrow, we're doing our physical fitness test for the officers. And then we have testing for three, three of our female officers, actually, are testing for the upcoming sergeant's position. So we're excited about that. I'm going to have to check with Jimmy and Mr. Campden to see if there's been a female sergeant with the police department before. Not that I'm aware of, so this could be a historic thing for us.
Yeah, cool.
And then the last thing I have here is we have our use of force training. Salida Police invited us to join them, so on the 18th and 25th, we'll be doing that. They use semunitions, and it's reality-based training where they give officers scenarios. And it really helps us work on de-escalation skills, communication. And then as a situation might turn dynamic, officers are able to use their skills and tools to resolve situations. Outside of that, our statistics are attached. If there's any question about those, I know Brian and I talked about maybe finding a little bit better format. If you look at page 57, just as an example of something, we got a new report writing system last year. And that's one of the tools on the system where we break the town up into four geographic codes. So that's what we call GeoCode 1, which is the area of like Avery Parsons and things north of there. And that will show calls for service. I can't remember what I inputted, but I think those are the calls for service, those red dots within a given timeframe. I think that was probably for September. And it helps us track crime and stats and data. And you can see the case numbers there and click on one of the dots that had the number four. And that means there's been four case reports at that location. And then we can click on those case reports to go see what types of crimes and reports officers are dealing with there. So that's a really cool tool. I'm not sure if that's something that I could incorporate into a Board of Trustee reports, but that data's out there if you want it, if there's questions. If we want to look at specific things like where are we having a lot of traffic accidents? Where are we having a lot of speeding issues or burglaries? This is a really good tool to help us track that type of thing. So as the trustees look at our stats, if there's questions, if they want to see things in a different format, I'm just showing you, we have a lot of different options related to that. And thanks for giving us the money to buy that report writing system. It's got some really cool tools like this. That's all I have. Thank you.
It's nice to get the visual with the map.
Yeah.
I think.
It helps us too.
Yeah, and that'd be interesting if you find things like speeding or
Yeah.
or certain specific issues you guys are dealing with. I think that'd be interesting for us to know.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah. So if you find a way to help us see that, that's great.
Yeah, and I think year-to-date has been an issue before as far as, you know, what does 2023 look like versus 2022? So we'll work on compiling something for that.
Thank you, Chief. And now we have the Chaffey County Fire Protection District. We have you.
Wow.
Thank you for coming.
I got to get the eyes that I can see. Didn't have that problem before. But. So I'm Thomas Navarrete, Tom Navarrete. I'm a member of the board for Chaffey County Fire. I've worked with some of you guys in the past. Last, I think last month, you saw Kent up here. He was doing a chief's report. We've decided as a board to not have Kent be our interim fire chief at this time. We feel that we could function correctly in the way that we want to and still be able to get through this process of funding our new chief and still be able to offer the services. We have plenty of people as department heads in our department that are capable of doing their jobs and continue forward, you know, and still have good communication with town and with the rest of the county. As far as the chief's report, what I got here is the consulting firm for hiring our new chief. That's already been picked. It's McGrath Consulting. And I believe today was the first meeting that the committee had to get together and start the process. It's going to be a bit of a process. I've been on this board before when we went through it. So I know it's going to take some time. We, on this committee, I don't know if Kent had mentioned it, but we try to get a pretty good cross group of folks from town, the county, the volunteers themselves, and the board, so that it's, it includes everyone in the hiring committee. So we've done that, and that's, that's in. That contract's been signed. Some of McGrath is starting that work. As far as the fire marshal, and that's Ms. Kira. She completed six commercial inspections, completed fire inspections for the elementary school, did three STR inspections, short-term rentals, and one re-inspection. The next thing is developing a plan with the high school for homecoming bonfire events in the future. So honestly, I don't know what that is right now. I'd have to, I'd have to ask.
Sure, I can speak to that. So working with Principal Barnaby, honoring the tradition of a small town having a homecoming bonfire while still respecting the fire situation that we have. With this year, the high school was allowed to have small fire pits in their parking lot. I think it went really well and was received. But we also understand that there's something to be said for having some tradition of having a large bonfire for homecoming. And so we're looking to be able to offer that next year in a way that is controlled by the fire service from start to finish in terms of, we will, we'll work with the town in terms of, I know that they've had it out of the rodeo grounds, working with the town about location, making sure that the grass and fuels and things like that are mitigated appropriately. We will be the ones who will gather the fuels in terms of we can control the size and the type of fuels, and we will build it. And we will be the ones that will light it and extinguish it so that there's not, there's not aspects of the bonfire that we feel unsure of and uncomfortable with. That way, we can honor the tradition of having a bonfire at the homecoming and still make sure that we feel comfortable and safe with that. Obviously, if there's burner restrictions at that time, we still don't like. But it enables us to not have to write a burn permit, which is what the struggle has been previously. And like I said, we will be the ones that will build it appropriately with the right-sized fuels and extinguish it. And like, that takes a load off of the high school administration as well as the student bodies in terms of gathering the fuels and the time that it takes to build that. And so to be a part of the community in that way and honor that tradition and still make sure that everybody's safe is a discussion that we've initiated with Principal Barnaby for next year and years moving forward, so.
Thank you, Kira. The last thing that we've got on here, a couple more things. Incidents year-to-date. Got 411 in 2023, which is up from 341 in 2022 as far as callouts. There is also, the last thing, it says bill levy assessment from Chaffey County Fire. So I'm wondering if that's the question as far as the portion of the town? Is that what we're talking about?
There was some discussion based on potentially comments that were made in the last trustee meeting. And we just wanted to offer up the opportunity to have some further discussion if the, if the board has some questions, concerns, any other things that they wish to have some explanation on. Mr. Navarrete is here to kind of provide that from the stance of our board to you guys to be able to offer that up.
Yes, thank you. You know, there have been a couple of questions out there as to the amount, because, gosh, we all got hit with the property tax. I don't know if that's something that we want to try to discuss. Or if on the report, if I can give you what, why we think. How can I say? I had a couple of questions as to whether or not the amount that the town would pay for the services this coming year, this next year, is higher than it was in pass. And that's due to the, to the increase in property tax and everything else. It was asked as to if we would take a lower amount, if we would be able to do that, because everybody's been hit across the town city limits. Well, we've been hit across the whole county. And a couple of the questions that I received or that I'm aware of are, you know, is it possible for us to do a bit less for the town to be a little less burdened for the citizens of the town? Problem is, is we're going from what was a certain amount last year, about 350,000, 360,000, to what the assessed value that I see that we've calculated is right around 500, maybe a little bit more. So it's quite a bit of an increase, you know, about 160, 148,000 dollar increase, which percentage-wise is a big percentage. And people are saying, well, gosh, that's, that's a big chunk to take. And, and yes, it can be seen that way. One of the reasons are, why do we need to take that increase? Why can't we take a little bit less? Well, these are some of the things as a board that we've discussed and we've been discussing, not just recently, but in the past. Some of the things that we've needed and that this will help us move forward as a department that we need to be for the town and the county is we, we're down with fire chief. We need to hire an administrative assistant, and we know that. There may be possibly be another position that we need to look at. We have a resident program which is built for, for young people to come in. We get to teach them how to be a firefighter. They work with us for two years. We train them. They volunteer for us at the same time, whether they're getting the training. And after two years, they have an opportunity to go work at a fire department. What we would like to do with this, with this resident program is get, maybe not all of these people from the Front Range or the young people from Springs or Denver or something, but see if we can incorporate some of our own young people from here that are interested in fire service, that would want to be part of the resident program. And in doing something like that, Chief Bertram took a lot of that responsibility onto himself when the resident program was here. And he, he did a lot of that. He was spreading himself really thin in a lot of aspects. But with him gone, we have a training coordinator, but he's, he's to train our firefighters as well as residents. But we need somebody to be in charge of that resident program. So that's a new hire that we don't have at this point, at this time right now. That's something that we're looking for. And we want to make that program, the resident program, to be one that could help our own young people in our county or surrounding counties, to make it a little bit easier. The, the other thing is we live in a really beautiful place. And this beautiful place, I was talking to Sean earlier, I moved here 35 years ago. You could walk downtown when the CKS, that building was a roller rink. And, you know, there was nothing going on. I could, I lived in a little trailer right here behind where the jailhouse is. There used to be a trailer house that the power service had. That's where I live. And this town is completely different. The needs of this town are completely different. That being said, we've operated from the last time we were looking for a chief to where we're at today. We have built the organization, Chaffey County Fire, to where we have department heads. We have an inspection department. We have mechanics. We have trainers. These are all things we didn't have nine years ago. These were all developed in the last eight, nine years, which have put us in a better position today. Much better position today to be able to offer the services we need to offer. But in doing that, we've been fortunate that the people that we've had have been willing to do it for the amount of money that we've, that we have. Just recently, we lost a firefighter to another county. And it was, it wasn't just money, but that was a big factor. It's hard to live in this area, and you dedicate yourself to fire service, where you can't get that part-time job if you're a firefighter. You know, if you're a full-time staff, you can't get another fight. If you're a volunteer, you know, you want to be, your time needs to be of value. It can't cost you more than, than anything. And so what we're trying to do is raise the wages so we can at least be competitive. Our people here have, for years, taken less of a wage to protect us and to do the service here. We need to get ourselves, the whole organization, to a point where we can competitively pay our base staff and we can help our volunteers in the way where it doesn't cost them money to volunteer. Just getting to a gas alone, fuel alone, you know, getting to a place and coming back. It's expensive, the time. The volunteers need to have, need to feel like they're compensated, like they're, they're thanked, like they're appreciated. And then to do that, you know, we, we, we ask them to train. We ask them to go out on these scenarios. We ask them to work with younger firefighters. We ask them to be ready to go. With all of that, we've done that with the less than adequate budget at this time. You know, we've done that for years. And this, we were in the talks of being able to have, what are you going to do? We need more money to pay our people. We need more money to keep our people. And, and even though this increase in property has affected all of us, I own property in town and in the county, and it's affected all of us. It's a lot higher. But I just can't see where we, we would take the time or, or try to reduce a service that is very important to us. We all want to make sure that, that we have our, our property protected. We all want to make sure that our people are trained properly, which they are. And they do that a lot of times at, at no cost, or they do that at. And they do that a lot of times at, at, at no cost, or they do that at, at, um, on their end. Uh, we try not to let that happen, but it does sometimes. So that's one of the reasons is we've got some hires that we got to come up, we got to make sure that we're competitive in our wages. One of the other things that's very important is equipment. You know, for the last, I've been on this board, I would say, I'm going to say twelve, thirteen years, something like that. And in that time, uh, I've been around fire departments, I've been on boards, wildfires, which, uh, 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 regular structure fire. We've always had great equipment and that's because Chief Bertram was really good at buying used stuff. And we make sure that it runs. Uh, Chris Stromer makes sure that things keep going, you know, the rest of the, the, the battalion chiefs, they make sure that if there's anything wrong, they know that we get it fixed. There's some equipment because of the construction that's happening now in town. And the narrowness of some of our streets is going to make it, make it real tough for our existing equipment to try to get down into South Main. You know, to try to get, uh, that on, on initial call. Uh, access is a really difficult thing. Um, and because the building that's going on nowadays is, is a lot taller, it's not so much just spread out on land. It makes it tight for us to be able to get to certain places. That's going to require maybe different equipment. We've got a ladder, we've got one ladder that could, that could do a three-story building, that could take care of that. However, getting that truck in the position to do its job is a challenge. We think that eventually, and here in the near future, we're going to really have to look at a vehicle that can, that can take care of um, that tall of a building and be able to maneuver through the narrowness of some of the streets that we have to deal with. We know that's coming because that's, you know, that's just a building that's happening.
Um, may I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Um, I think we can, we, we get the picture in terms of, of, uh, uh, that you need the money and, um, what I'm wondering though is whether do you also have a mill levy increase that is going to hit the ballot at some point?
So at this point, no. At this point, we, we did discuss it. And it's proven for us to talk about that. But we were waiting to see what this was going to hap- what was going to happen. You know, with this increase, we got countywide, citywide. And at, at that point, uh, just with that happening, um, we've never asked for an increase in our mill levies ever since the organization began, never. And we've operated and have grown into what we are today without asking. And we were going to, but at this point, we didn't want to put that. First of all, that, that's another thing on top of the other people asking for money. We wanted to just see how this played out with the increase by itself. And in doing that figuring, uh, we believe that we could still move forward.
Okay, well, um, we're going to begin our budget talks tonight, so, um, we do have a number in there and we'll just, uh, consider, consider whether we can keep it the way we have it.
Well, we, uh, again, um, we've come a long way. Uh, Shafie County Fire and Town of One Vista. We've come a long way. And, uh, it's been the best, uh, cooperation I've seen in years. And I, I want, I know the board, not just me, and, and I'm saying the board wants us to continue to cooperate and work together and make sure that we can, we can accomplish what each one of us wants to do. We want to provide a great service for the people of the county and of the town. And we want to make sure that you're getting what you need too.
Oh, we appreciate working with you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And now we have the planning director, Mr. Joey Benson.
Yeah, thank you all very much, uh, the report is on page fifty-nine. Um, as you know, we have a full cadre of planners on staff now, which is great, although we're catching up on, uh, training and have to do various things, so creating processes and such. Uh, part of that, uh, we're still working on the comprehensive plan, we're kind of restructuring the RFP a bit and we'll bring a draft one to you all just for feedback at, at some point. Just to double check, we're on the same page in terms of direction and, um, prioritization, the board and what the planning department has to do, so. Um, part of that is course reviewing, reviewing some codes. Um, we've got a few in process that we'd like to bring forward to planning zoning and board trustees. Uh, there's nothing really urgent, we're trying to work on it, but there's a lot of, um, competing priorities as well, you know, such as training people. Um, with that, uh, we are bringing forward, uh, there's going to be a work session November fourteenth with the, um, Chief County Building Department, Pat Green's coming for a little presentation on the new proposed building code for the county. Um, which will, which will get into the county adopts their code and then the town can adopt it or some version of it, you know, pick and choose or whatever we want to do. But we'll, we'll outline some, um, some ideas and things for you. Um, and so that's upcoming. Um, building permits slowed down a little bit, although we just had a couple come in yesterday. But we gave a little breathing room, meanwhile, however, had a lot of, uh, finer subdivisions. The moratorium was lifted on the twenty-first. Um, we had a pre-application meeting yesterday, today, and then tomorrow. Um, and one last week as well, hotline adjustments and, you know, a couple splits to do a few things, you know, add, add housing units and such, so. Um, we've got some, uh, we expect the final plat to come into town for the crossing very soon, later this week. We've got the homestead working on their preliminary plat. South Main is doing, uh, some fine tuning before they actually submit for their, um, preliminary and final sort of this joint submittal process. Um, and, um, and the Baldur's is working on trying to get some building permits, uh, processed as soon as they have water and sewer within that, so things are moving along. Um, uh, but with that, only maybe one additional SFE uh, has happened, although we've got a couple permits all processed, finished processing tomorrow, which probably another two or three um, in terms of housing. The Upper Arc Agreement is, um, uh, moving forward, there's a, uh, for the fifty acre feet. So there, the two attorneys worked together today on answering a few things and addressing a couple questions in terms of, um, uh, that, that process. And so I think after Thursday, there's a meeting Thursday with the Upper Arc, their team. So I think we'll, we'll have some good progress after that. And yeah, with that, that's a lot going on in the planning department. Plenty, plenty to do, so. And we can discuss later a little bit more, uh, that presentation from earlier. Some implications of that, good, bad and the ugly. Just a title. You have any questions?
Well, thank you for taking on the planning department and rebuilding it so quickly. It's great.
Thank you, trying.
How is it in the new space?
Oh, we got the heat working.
Oh, that's good.
There were some cold mornings and then one really hot day. I think it's pretty hot there right now, but, uh, like eighty-seven degrees. And so I think we're balancing it out and, uh, it's great having that space. So thank you all for the support of getting that together for, um, getting the police moved. And then us there.
Do you feel like it's beneficial having it, having your own space for the planet?
Yeah, you know, it, it's, it's taken, there's some, some really great synergy that happens working with the town hall folk, you know, everyone together and, and we do a lot of going back and forth and, and we, of course, missing, miss jawing with them. And, uh, but we're making do. You have to go visit all of us from time to time, right?
I see you guys walking sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, all in all, it, it's, uh, it's going to work out, it's going to work out well, once we get some systems in place and. Yeah, you know, you, you, there's always a, a, uh, great advantage to being closer to people and, and you know, having that kind of daily interaction so you can chit chat with folk and throw ideas off, but just what it is.
Well, that was a problem.
You alone in there.
Adjustment, not having you guys there, I can tell you that. Big adjustment. Any other questions for Joel? Thank you, Joel. So now we have, um, Public Works Director Sean Williams.
Thanks, sir. Um, good evening. Um, we'll, um, jump right into water, um. Little, little bit of a pause there on, uh, on our unaccounted, um, I, yeah. I wanted to like be more dramatic about it, but it gets down to eleven percent. It's been a goal for quite a while right now, right?
Super digits ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so, so kind of good numbers there, Ivy, Ivy League as well, I, you know, I haven't, I haven't gotten a good answer from our, from our water department team as to like how we got there. Uh, I'll just say, we've been, you know, finding some things as we've been going and we haven't stopped the discussions. And I know Joe's been working with the Ivy League corp team on a little bit of staff time and, and, you know, um, Matlock kind of hunch kind of things where, where we can maybe shut some things off and see what happens and where, where they're going, but um, you know, we, we did bring in, um, uh, consultant to help us with some leak detection and that helped a little bit. Um, um, yeah, there, there's a few things in here, kind of like trying to get them back is the hard part, right? Trying to get people in to, to come and do the work for us, finish concrete at, uh, Charles Street Park. Those are all things that constantly tried to chase down, but you know, we're, we're, we're not done here. And I anticipate that, you know, we'll spend the rest of this year and, and even, you know, a fair amount of time and budget, you know, as far as um, going into twenty-four for, for leak detections as we see it. Sometimes those are anomalies where, you know, we get two thousand three-quarter inch and one inch meter and they all land on the perfect digit, right? And so that cleans everything up here, doesn't usually happen that way, right? So the average is probably not likely to be that, but we have been working. And so I think we're starting to see some of the, uh, some of the benefits to, to the time that we spent, um, out there doing that kind of work. Um, a little bit on the water plant project, yeah, uh, met with the, the JHL team, it was a pre-construction meeting. Got a really, got a good, really, really good vibe with them. Um, they have a, a great structure, they brought in a pretty dynamic team and, um, have a few kind of key dates on there for you, you know, um, the start date and the anticipated completion date of September ninth, twenty twenty-four. So that would probably in all likelihood be sooner for their, their, their scope services isn't nearly as elaborate as the Ice Lakes scope is, but, um, that's the, uh, that's the, you know, the locked-in last day that, you know, they anticipate being able to, uh, needing to, uh, to construct the, uh, the infiltration phase of the project. Um, so that's basically a good indicator is like, when would we be done with the project? We'll see, that's we're lucky, September twenty twenty-four. And then I can retire, right? Go, go work for Joe, or, you know, or do something like that. Anyways, um, what a ride this has been, uh, but hey, it's, it's really exciting and I'm fortunate to be participating at this level and I, I appreciate that. Um, um, a couple of things, um, might, might just want to elaborate on, um, compliance sampling and lead and copper inventory. So lead and copper inventory, I realized when I wrote that down, I was writing it for me, not for somebody that doesn't really know what the heck lead and copper inventory is, so um, just to kind of elaborate on that, every, every year there's compliance sampling, monitoring sampling that we, uh, that we produce. Uh, it's regulated by CDPHE, state drinking water act, stuff like that. And lead and copper, uh, has maximum levels and, and so we sample strategic, you know, based on the age of the pipes and, and we have tier structure that the state provides us for guidance. Going into twenty-three and twenty-four, they have a, a higher, uh, level of concern regarding lead, uh, and copper and mostly lead and service lines. And so we're inventorying our, our, our water service lines that are connected to our distribution systems and going to our customers. And so those are pretty random, some of them are pretty old, most of the, uh, uh, town lines have removed things like lead, um, from their, from the system. There was a time where we, water operators utilized lead for, for solder joints and, and connections with water mains. And we're just basically going to do our due diligence inventory of our water lines in town and figure out where we're at. Uh, we have about a year to do that and, uh, our goal is to actually get done with it this year. So we can have a good head start moving into twenty twenty-four, see if we have any issues. If there are issues that come up with that, we'll probably need to strategize that, we do have time to do that. But if there is, if it happens to be a, um, carbonized pipe that's connected to a copper service line, it's, you know, there's, there's certain conditions that, um, in, in a bad scenario, you know, um, you know, uh, old pipes can precipitate things, uh, based on how they're installed and, you know, copper and galvanized don't really like each other, things like that. So, um, if that comes up and we find some, some lines in, you know, in our system or in our customers' yards, you know, we're, we're going to want to try to strategize and, uh, uh, get out in front of that early so that we can find a way to mitigate that and do right by our customers, do right by the state, do right by the city, things like that. So that's what we're working on along with a few other things. So, um, Joe's really diligent with this kind of stuff. Um, I really appreciate his, his action and his, um, his, 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 just the way he's, he's wired to, to meet things head-on and um, well, yeah, we'll, we'll be okay there, uh, we'll find out. Um, uh, man, I've only got through like two light-ups, sorry, this can be a long night. Um, um, yeah, like Joel said, the Baldur's project is, is, um, constructing right now. So there's some off-site work connected to the water main on Railroad Street, working on connecting, uh, up towards the side. Going to be coming down and, and tying into the, the water into, uh, um, Colorado Avenue and moving up to the site. We have a few things that we need to get out in front of, um, but for the most part, it looks like that project is, is going pretty well. Um, uh, we have an Arizona Bridge, um, we've been meeting tomorrow, see what interest we have in that. Um, and that bid date's coming, um, October twenty-fifth. Um, sidewalk replacements, we're still working on a few small projects here and there, some of the sidewalk replacement program match funds that we have, I'm looking at a few sidewalks at the Sunrise Manor to see, they're, they're doing a sidewalk replacement program right now. So I think I'd like to take some of our funds and see if we can come up with, um, some of that sidewalk match. Hes Albertson, um, is getting paid finally this week. Um, um, Peter, uh, hopefully that's paid. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know if you're out of town, if you are, you know, I call us to have it paid by Friday. So we'll have a nice two-lane street here pretty soon. Um, pretty happy with the concrete work, the sidewalks, the curb and gutter and the driveways, it's a really clean site. Um, it's, it's, it's looking really nice. Um, yeah, um, talked about Charles Street. Um, one thing, yeah, one thing, I'm, I'm just kind of, kind of jumped down to, uh, to something that I didn't have on. Looks like, um, starting this week, Thursday, um, we're going to be closing, um, a block on Main Street for the, uh, CKS Viking waterline connections. So on Thursday, we're planning on, uh, closing the street down and doing some street cuts, cutting the asphalt. And then on Monday, closing it down, it's probably going to take about a week. So we're reaching out to the business owners in that area this week, letting them know what's happening. Uh, but also it's a pretty significant impact, if we can get done sooner, I, I'm just thinking it's probably going to take about a week to get it done. Um, so, um, yeah, a little detour routes in place, traffic control plans in place. And yeah, we're working with the, um, general contractor and the subcontractors to get that done most, you know, uh, efficiently and effectively as we can. There's two fire lines and two domestic water lines, uh, Department of Fire is going to need to, um, schedule a day. And I think Colorado's already done that to come and do the inspections, maybe do some pressure testing and things like that, so. Um, it's going to take a little bit, take a little bit of time to do that.
Will businesses in that block be accessible by foot?
By foot on the, um, on the, on the south side. The sidewalk in front of that, um, project site will be closed down as well. So, you know, be a long walk around. So yeah, a long walk around around the block to get there. Yeah, I'll stop there if you have any questions, something I need to cover, happy to talk about it.
Questions for Sean?
No, just, you know, I'm glad they will have that paved, but Waylon will miss jumping on you, Sean.
I missed, I didn't hear that, Peter.
Oh, no, I was just making a joke about my dog jumping on you in that area. That's about to be paved.
Yeah, well, I'm looking forward to that day.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Now we'll move on to our business items. The first of which is the Buena Vita Wine and Spirits. We have Mark Krasnow here. And Paul, are you doing the lead in on this or is?
I am going to do the lead in so I can give the board a bit of history on it because I know Trusty Rice wasn't on the board when we first approved this license, and I don't know if Peter was on the board. So I can just give a brief history before Mark Mark shares his update. So on May tenth of twenty twenty two, the Board of Trustees held a public hearing for retail liquor license for Buena Vita Spirit Liquor Store owners Mark, excuse me, Mark and Kristen Krasnow. The Board of Trustees approved the retail liquor license based on hand drawn sketch plans. The Krasnos were told that the liquor license application packet would not be submitted to the Colorado Department of Liquor License Division until a plot plot plan detailed sketch of the interior, architectural drawings of the building to be constructed were submitted to the town to be included in the liquor application packet to the state. Mark submitted the drawings and an updated check for the state license fees on February sixteenth, twenty twenty three. The application was submitted to the Colorado Department of Revenue on February twenty second of twenty twenty three, and the state issued the state license on April nineteenth, twenty twenty three, which expires on April eighteenth, twenty twenty four. According to C R S forty four, three dash three oh six related to inactive licenses, the state or local licensing authority at its discretion may revoke our election to renew a retail license if it determines that the license premise has been inactive without good cause for at least one year. Or in the case of a retail license approved for a facility that has not been constructed, the facility has not been built and placed in operation within two years after approval of the license application. Our construction of the facility has not commenced within one year after the approval. Mark broke ground on May tenth, twenty twenty three, and is with us this evening to provide an update. And this is not intended as an action item or request at this time. Mark, you can give us.
Good evening. Good to see all of you. Thanks for having me here. I'm very excited to give you an update on this project. So Paul, I think I'm correct you on one of those things. You were saying that I I believe we got approved in May of twenty two. And because May of twenty three is when we had to break ground.
Right, I said May tenth, twenty twenty two.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said twenty three. So, yeah, we, my wife and I have been thinking about this for a long time. Got the perfect location now. And, yeah, we're it it there's it's obviously taking a little bit longer than than we thought. Let me go to the next slide. There are, you know, three parts to the process, planning, approval, construction. So right away, we engaged, you know. First of all, we had our very first meeting with Mark Doring, our site plan application in March of twenty one. And then we moved forward and purchased our our lot in January of twenty two. And and then we engaged principal architecture pretty much right away in in March of twenty two. And their proposed design timeline was nineteen was eighteen weeks. So they actually took fifty two weeks to get us our plans. It was frustrating process. They were very happy with the final product, but I probably would not recommend them if you're asking me for architect recommendation. So once we finally got our plans, you know, we we let's see. We applied for our license in April of twenty two. On May tenth of twenty two, our application or license was approved. And yeah, so let's see, it was March twenty eighth of twenty three, when we submitted our first site plan to Doug Tark. My understanding it was going to take, you know, four to eight weeks to get that approved. And we did two rounds of revisions with with Doug and Joel's the third planner we're working with on this project. We're currently winning our fourth round of of site plan. We submitted our fourth revision of the site plan and we are thirty three weeks after submitting our first site plan. So the design took a lot longer than we thought. The approval is taking a lot longer than we thought. The construction, my my builder is Matt Rain out of Colorado Springs. He's a very capable builder. He does commercial projects all the time. He's very confident that he can get it done in ten months. If we can get our our site plan approved and, you know, to maybe, I think, next week. It takes two, three weeks to get the building permits from the from the county. If we can start by November November first of this year, actually start construction. That's me. The only reason we got to break ground on May the tenth was because Taylor Boone, my excavator was down here in South Main anyway and just drove over so we could dig that little hole real quick so we could meet that deadline. But there's no way we're going to be able to meet the deadline for the two year mark. You know, honestly, I I don't think anybody could build much of anything in two years, starting from, you know, without having a full plan. So that's kind of where we are. We are, you know, really hopeful that, you know, the construction timeline will go as go as planned. And, you know, it was really frustrating to hear, you know, or or see the the time slip by. Our goal was to be open by, you know, before Paddle Fest of of next year. You know, that was going to be a great time to to start this business and have a very, you know, full South Main all summer. And, you know, we're we're wrapping our heads around that fact that it's going to be okay to start in the fall because it's not going to be as busy. We'll be able to get our systems underneath us and train the staff to kind of get things, you know, together so that we can, you know, do it next, you know, have a great next, have a great next year. Yeah, that's about it. Any questions?
So on that page where Brian, you just had it, page seventy six, that item four and item five, those should both be twenty.
Twenty four, yes, that was a typo. Thanks.
So hopefully, construction will be completed nine one twenty four and open for business ten one twenty four.
Yep, so that is a lot of depending on when we get our building permits. Ten months is the anticipated construction deadline, and I'm giving myself a month after that to, you know, get all the shelving, get the inventory, get the decorations, get the point sale, get everything else, you know, going and ready to go first so we can open the doors. We would open the doors as soon as we can. If we can get it done before July fourth, we'll be open before July fourth. But it's not likely.
Has your concept changed at all?
Nope, nope, we're still doing planning the boutique liquor store and and wine shop. We're going to be focusing on, you know, creating a very a a high end liquor store and wine shop. We don't want to be, you know, exclusive, but we want to have a very knowledgeable staff. We want to, you know, do lots of wine tastings and events onsite. We want to just carry different things, you know, we're not going to carry Bud Light, we're not going to carry P B R. You know, we get those other places. We're going to try and bring in things that you're not finding other places from, you know, craft beers all over the country to the spirits and and especially the wine. And then the vacation rentals upstairs.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the trustees? The trustees will recall that we debated it quite a bit about this in the first place when we approved the application for the liquor license in that it's right across the street from the skate park. And, you know, just kind of, we were able to come to a conclusion that the type of inventory that you're going to carry is hopefully not something that's going to draw children into the liquor store.
Well, I can assure you, your children will not be purchasing anything in our liquor store. You know, we're going to have very advanced, you know, age identification things. They make them now where you can just scan the I D. You know, so you don't even have to do the math. Obviously, you know, every liquor store in in Colorado has a has a thing that says if you're born before this, you know, you can't buy anything. We're not selling sodas, we're not selling candy, we're not selling things that the the kids are coming over here for. So I really don't see that as an issue, as an issue. You know, Paul did mention that this, you know, isn't a formal request for an extension, but I'm going to be up here asking for a formal request for an extension at some point. It's just, everything's just taking too long. And in my previous conversations with Doug Tark, he made it very clear that the the timetable, you know, it's it's a it's a state imposed two year limit, right? Like the state just has this deadline that says you have to break ground in one year. If you're not already open, you have to open the doors within two years. But that, you know, we get Doug is had, we had several conversations and emails about how it's really up to you guys to be able to extend that deadline for us if, you know, if it comes to that. And it's going to come to that.
Other other questions or comments from trustees? Andrew, Robin, right?
Appreciate the seat.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Great.
We'll see you again once you have a better idea.
Yeah, exactly. Once we get going and better idea. Joel, do you have an update for me?
It seems like the site plan is almost done, I mean, from the last, but but I don't. But we're really close.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, item B has to do with the Upper Arkansas River Valley Park Improvement Project. And this is a shared project where we applied for a grant in in conjunction with Salida and the county. We got some some amount of the grant, but not the full thing. So this, who's taking this one?
I'll take this. I was going to have Shane come just for this individual item. Just kind of more of an update. More than anything, it's one of those projects that's taken a few turns from the original approval by the board to apply for the grants. Originally, the grant was for six hundred and six, six hundred and sixty six thousand. Resubmitted for a lower amount of four hundred and fifteen, and then that was reduced even more with a hundred and fifty thousand a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant award between the two entities. And then part of the structure of that grant was seven percent for essentially grant administration with the community foundation being the fiscal agent. So, you know, of a original third approved grant application of three hundred and seventy seven, it's whittled down to essentially sixty nine thousand. Shane did provide a kind of breakdown of how they anticipated to use that fund or those funds. Him and Earl have done a good job of identifying what these can be used for. So mainly in the Whipple Bridge, we've got materials and installation for the decking material. You got the River Park bathrooms. I think part of the original application was to do the decking around the bathroom at that location. That's just going to be kind of put on hold. Future funding allocations. And then some in the way of the boat ramp upgrade at that location labor and aggregate. And then the rock and roll trail just kind of getting as far as they can on that particular location. I think long term, the rock and roll trail probably needs more love than thirty six thousand dollars. And at some point, kind of loop it back around so it's not just a dead end there back tap trail. But it looks like a pretty good breakdown of use of funds that they're proposing. And basically, the next step for the grant itself is they've finally been awarded. Having got contracts in place, they need a letter executed by the City of Salida Town of Buena Vista Chaffey County Community Foundation to submit to the O E D group to finalize the contract and actually open up the So that was included in the packet. If you have questions, I may or may not be able to answer.
We did update the budget mid-year with the revenues and expenses at these lower lower grant funding. What they've organized here is reflected in the twenty twenty three budget.
Great. Anybody have any questions on this? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have the big item of the.
Need a motion to approve that letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Would someone like to make a motion with the signing of this letter? It's on page seventy nine of your packet.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
That's Row and Swisher, all in favor? Thank you. Anyone oppose? The motion passes. Great. Okay, now we get to move on to the proposed twenty twenty four budget. And I know that Philip Bucket will be leading us through this part.
Where's Trusty Lacritzy going?
He's leaving.
You can't miss it. You can't. No, you can't leave, Joel. No. Good evening, everybody. Yes, we've reached the formal presentation of the twenty twenty four draft budget. So plenty of pages in your packet, starting on page eighty. I summarized what we have in the packet in the memo. So tonight, I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights of where things are at by fund. Point out some of the key information for you to look at in the attachments. And then we do need a motion from the board to set public hearings for the next handful of meetings, and that's down at the bottom of that memo on our B O T action. So we need to set those public hearings for the budget through the end of this process. So, yeah, we we, as we have the last three, four years, we we're utilizing a combination of of tools. Clear, ClearGov is our primary tool in line to kind of capture all of the details. And then, you know, we we use our Tyler E R P system and spreadsheets as well. Staff's done a tremendous job, both on the operating and capital side, putting things together. We've been meeting individually with the departments and then as a leadership team to kind of track where we're at. You know, kind of point out where we where we have to make some priority decisions at staff. So a lot of that's been baked into this, and now it's 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 kind of to you all in a lot of ways and to the public to to take a look at this and ask questions. You know, help help kind of steer as we kind of get down to a final balance budget across all the all the funds. So I'll go through a few highlights here on on each fund. The general fund is structurally balanced as presented. It does include transfers of one hundred thirty thousand to the airport and three hundred eighteen thousand to the capital fund. As I mentioned at the work session last time, that three hundred and eighteen thousand for capital fund, that's that's a bit lower than what I would like to see on an ongoing basis. We're not in too much trouble looking at our capital requests for the general fund with that transfer in twenty twenty four. However, we were roughly five hundred thousand this year, so you can see it, it's it's a bit of a drop. And capital projects will only get more expensive and will be more of that type of thing in the future. So while we try to solve a lot of the balancing the budget challenges, I I do want to keep highlighting that 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 amount is a is a little bit low. Okay. Capital Improvement Fund, which the first attachment to to this packet has a summary of the capital projects by fund that you can see, and it splits out by funding source. But looking at the Capital Improvement Fund for the general fund, it it looks it looks pretty good, and one of the reasons is we rely heavily on grants and and some transfers from from our funds. We right now are, the way it's loaded, we are requiring a transfer of roughly three hundred and eighty six thousand from the general fund. So you can see we've got a little bit of a gap there with with is as of now. Water Fund is structurally balanced. Water Fund is structurally balanced. However, it does include a spend into fund balance of. Roughly five hundred thousand dollars, and that's. That's, uh, almost exclusively, you can attribute that to our infiltration gallery expansion project and the contract we recently approved that. Is a little higher than originally budgeted for that project. Airport Fund, not quite balanced yet. Uh, the team has been working extremely hard. To, um, get expenses down and, uh, make sure they're getting every penny out of their fuel sales. Margin, but they're still showing a twelve thousand dollar deficit on their budget. So. They're gonna continue to look at things. I I will say that I don't see much in their budget that would be worth reducing without. Delaying needed necessary capital and equipment. Out there. So, you know, um, one thing the board can consider is increa- increasing that transfer from the General Fund. So. Another thing to just kind of keep keep in the back of your mind there as we move forward. Street Fund, structurally balanced. Um, Sean's doing a good job of increasing investment into sidewalk and street work each year. We usually run a, um, excess revenue in this fund, and so it's built up a really nice fund balance, which. I know Sean and team will be needing in future years as, you know, street projects will need more attention. We have included the Arizona, uh, not train and bridge, but trail and bridge. In the in the budget, um, but that is taking a larger transfer from the street fund. So you'll see. We have a three hundred and forty-six thousand dollar transfer from street fund. To the capital fund to help cover that Arizona trail and bridge project right now. So that is projected to spend into fund balance for the street fund at about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Stormwater is balanced. Conservation Trust Fund has a surplus. Uh, REC has. A thirty thousand dollar transfer from that fund to help cover, uh, the radio grounds project that you'll see in the capital project. And and then finally, our marijuana special revenue fund. Right now, we're projected about seventy thousand dollars of surplus. That's the revenue projection for that fund. Right now, we don't have a transfer from that fund to capital. We certainly can, and. Roughly that would cover the projected deficit that we're seeing on the Capital Improvement Fund right now. So.
What are the type, what type of extended of, um, capital improvements? Can we use that for?
It it prioritizes recreation, open space, um, emergency services. It but it really is open to, uh, capital improvements. I mean, it's it's general, uh, language. So. Uh, the ballot language emphasized those things I just mentioned. But then it, but then it opens up, um, to things, i- it even housing, uh, type projects. Were approved in that language as well. So pretty broad use of those funds, but. I could have easily shown a transfer to help cover that, but I think it was worth. Pausing and having a discussion about that before we show the transfer. Next, I I'm gonna have a table in each report, so you can see that I'm I'm tracking things that are coming up in public requests. And kind of where they're at. So stage and rail trail, small grant request, that is in the budget, eighteen hundred dollars. Because the board did approve supporting that. If you'll remember, BV Heritage asked for fifteen thousand dollars. That is not in the budget. And then there were some comments last meeting about the legacy stage. Um, additional enhancements. There was no really definitive plan or dollar figure tied to that. So TBD. But we are aware that the Unification Board is looking at some, if not all, uh, of those. Enhancements. So I think more to be discovered there, um, with with that particular request. Uh, looking at the attachments, there's one I just want to show, uh, or highlight, so you know what you're looking at there. That's on page eighty-two. This is a summary of the capital projects by fund. And then kind of showing the funding source. So we have airport. Street Fund, Water Fund, and on the next page is the General Fund. So you can kind of see how those projects are split up between. Spending within the fund, which means within the annual, uh, budget for that fund. Or spending into fund balance. That's usually for carryover projects, grants, um, or or transfers from other funds. So. Uh, we used this format last year, so hopefully you're somewhat familiar with it. And then the other attach, oh, projected fund balance on page eighty-four. This is always a good one to to be aware of because it helps. Uh, project, especially if we're spinning into fund balance. Where are we projecting to be at the end of next year? Just so we're not getting out of whack with our our fund balances with all of our hopes and dreams. And then on page eighty-five starts all of the minutia detail. Broken down, so a good summary. Um, Brian had a good suggestion, so thank you, Brian. Good summary on page eighty-five by department. Uh, both revenue expenses and then, um, a few pages down, it's then broken down by individual accounts. Within all of our funds. So happy to take any questions now. Um, we can pause if you have any questions, comments.
When you look at page eighty-four, the, uh, twenty twenty-four ending fund balance projection. The Marijuana Fund has seventy thousand of anticipated revenues. But it starts out with fifty-one thousand from, basically from this year.
Correct.
So really, that's, um, some money that we could probably use. To, you know, to to make other. Make the capital improvements work out.
That's very true.
Is there any reason not to do that?
No, I don't think the board's ever set aside specific priorities for that fund. Um, it's essentially similar to our Conservation Trust Fund. Where we draw it down pretty close to zero on a regular basis. Uh, to help a lot of our rec and open space trails, that kind of thing, those kinds of projects. So no, Mayor, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't do that.
Okay, and the seventy thousand projected for this year takes into account the two stores being open. All year for twenty twenty-four.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So you said there's there's really no restriction on how that additional revenue can be used?
Um, I can, I can share with you before next meeting the language, so you can see. But there is a restriction in that it can't be used for operating. It has to be used for capital improvements. So it's pretty general when it comes to capital improvements.
You know, because I mean, Joel presented that payment schedule, you know, and there's a.
That payment schedule is already covered in the water fund structurally balanced.
But we talked about like if there's a certain schedule, but if we could pay faster. So there's just a question, is there a restriction? It probably couldn't be.
I would have to consult with legal on, could that be challenged? We call it capital improvement. You'll see it's listed as a capital project. Um, we would have to, yeah, we'd want to get a comfortable like yay, or don't go there.
There's any way we can get an extra drop of water faster?
Didn't you say that was part of the?
For water for housing.
If there's any way we can get an extra drop of water faster.
If we decide to move it out into.
Use something, it'd be. Good to say what we're putting it to instead of being like hundred and twenty towards eight things.
You know, we could put it towards the Billy Cordova Park or something like that. That'd be good.
That's a great point, just for good accountability back to. Things like that.
Good suggestion.
Yeah. That was my just idea right now.
So the ARPA funds. That are on that same page eighty-four, that ARPA reserve. Those funds that have really been allocated to Carbonite Street already.
We, if you remember, as part of our agreements on the Carbonite Street Phase One, um, we said that we would hold four hundred thousand. Towards, uh, potential additional costs on that project. So they are reserved right now.
Over the last few years, budget has been pretty easy. There's. You guys have really got it together. And so. I go down and so this says twenty twenty-one actuals, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Twenty twenty-four budget. And so if there isn't. You know, a big variation there, I really don't spend a whole lot of time looking at it. But on page ninety-seven, the town utilities, town hall was thirteen thousand. And in twenty twenty-three, it was eleven thousand for our twenty-four budget. It's thirty-four. Is that because we have more buildings that fall into that?
Great question.
But but a lot more buildings?
So two, couple of things, our utility, uh, charges are going way up. So, uh, natural gas and electric. We're running over budget this year.
Oh, good.
So that's happening at the same time. Yes, when we call, when we look at town hall as a department in the budget. That does include Old Town Hall and Town Hall East.
Okay.
So so it is, it's jumping up, but it's really, police department has not moved to their new building. So that that's where their budget is now. And so we've added a building and it shows up. All as much as anything.
So that used to be part of the police utility.
Correct. Yeah, and there's variation. Uh, you will see, um, and every one of those has. A a kind of a slightly different, uh, explanation. There's revenues that kind of jump up and down. For instance, we sold properties in twenty twenty-two, and so some of the revenues are like, wow, where did, why did that go up and then kind of down? So feel free to ask questions if you see something that looks a little odd.
I was wondering if we've allocated enough to the, uh, audit costs. Because we have it dropping down to twelve thousand five hundred.
Yes, so audit, uh, costs are split across finance and general fund, water. Fund and airport fund.
Okay.
So when you add all of all of those together. We're a little over twenty thousand dollars, which should cover a potential single audit for next year.
Okay. And I'm, I don't even know what a single audit is, but it's a special purpose.
Sounds fun, doesn't it?
Yeah. Sounds easy, but I know it's an extra.
He says it's not bad, so when it gets bad, I'm gonna pull.
Yeah, it's just a requirement when you get more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds. You know, with federal funds comes additional requirements, but. At least my experience, they don't dive into the real pain as we got, uh, audited by the EPA. Looking as far as the, uh, American Iron and Steel Certificate, said it was identified. For that project on letterhead by the manufacturer, um.
They're now looking at that style detail. They're looking at the project level, um, detail for that water project. So.
It's not bad. Um, it's definitely not another three hundred page document. It should be a handful of pages.
That's it.
Yeah, we're pretty well prepared for it, but they do charge more, uh, to do it, because it sounds scary.
It does.
So, uh, we are anticipating that. It just depends on when we spend the funds for the airport project. Whether we spend more than the seven fifty this year or if it gets split between the two years. Just to kind of reiterate, um, again, some of the assumptions that are that are, um, included in here. We do have a three percent increase in sales tax projected. Our, uh, property tax mill levy, and thank you all for staying, um, and speaking a little bit to. How that's impacting fire. Uh, but to again, kind of clarify, so for the towns. Portion of their of our mill levy, we're bound by a revenue increase. And so, uh, that's looking at, we're looking at about a seven percent increase year to year on our property tax revenue amount. And so we will temporarily reduce our mill levy to align with that revenue cap. So between, you you know, a modest sales tax increase, seven percent increase on. On the on the property tax side, you you can kind of see where with expenses of operating capital going up. Are kind of squeezed a little bit on our, especially on our capital transfer. Any other questions?
So on our fire cost, we do have the full increase in there, right?
We do, page one oh one, you'll see. You'll see that, uh, number reflected from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And and I think, uh, you know, when we when we started corresponding, projecting. You know, I, I I hope it came across that, you know, town is is very interested in you all being successful, right? There was always a, as soon as, uh, Chief Bertram approached our board about, hey, we, we need to start looking at revenue. Sources and potential mill levy increase. I think our board is pretty supportive of having that conversation. As you mentioned, things have kind of changed since that initial statement and with, uh, assessment values going so far up. Uh, yeah, it puts puts the number where it is. Uh, I think from our staff perspective, I think it was just a, can we talk through? With that amount of increase, is that what was needed or some other amount or? Because, yeah, our revenue sources aren't increasing that much at that percentage. So. Anyway, sorry, I just wanted to circle that into the conversation.
I would like to go back to. The BV Heritage ask for dollars. I know since I've been on the board that we were supporting them and giving them. Money. Why do they not qualify for what we give a percent to that? I can't think of the name, but they decide how it gets given out.
They can.
They can. And they say they don't qualify.
I don't, I don't think I have ever seen proofs that they don't qualify.
Okay.
I'm not aware of that. I don't think they.
Maybe their ask would be too large for.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think.
We're putting in there.
That's probably more so the case. They they would like more money than what is allocated from that. That bucket of money, because we're roughly projecting sixty-one thousand going to shaky community.
That'd be twenty-five percent of the total.
That'd be a large amount. Yeah, I I I do want to say, um, there was no consistent give to Heritage. Um, there there was. Between twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, there were, uh. There were contributions for capital projects. They had, they did the roof, they did the cupola. So they approached the board in those years, and there was a five thousand. One year, there was a ten thousand. So there there was a span of of years where town did give to BV Heritage, but it wasn't.
And I know that we said that we would never give for wages.
At that time, there was a statement about operating. They want, town wanted to prior, look at capital projects. That's true. That's right.
I I would like.
I'm sorry.
I would like to see that they get something, but if they qualify for that community grant stuff, that's where. They need to go for the ask, but I wouldn't give them the total of what they asked.
One question on on page one oh five at the bottom, there's three thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-four budget for HPC. And what what does that cover? It's out of planning.
Sure, yeah, that, uh, that was in the public support uh budget until this year and we pulled it out of public support and put it into the planning department, because we're the interface mostly with uh historic preservation commission. So some of that would be for vinyl placards or sending people to training, uh, you know, we're part of a certified local government uh program. So there's training opportunities and conferences. Uh one, one agent member just went to a nice conference um with the CLG and is actually, uh, you know, we might be a host now, uh, maybe next year of a, of a conference here or maybe, maybe in twenty twenty-five. So um, so that sort of thing, ongoing training mostly.
So that goes to our commission. Right.
Okay, so was that previously you said in the overall uh support to the community section, you say?
No, it was in the uh public support um.
Publics.
Public support portion. So separate from the uh Chaffey, you know, the community foundation in, in its own part.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Is now the time to ask specific things or should we be waiting till we get to clear go where there's? This is your budget, so you can ask.
You can ask.
How you can send email, you can, um, I will be opening up ClearGov and sending you invitations and you're free to, to loo- look at that um or you can send things directly or bring them up during these meetings. Whatever you prefer.
Is the recycling thing, is it just a carryover from A- Angels of Shavonah hoping that something happens?
That's a placeholder. So that's to be determined. That could go away. We're still kind of waiting on the county to reply.
Yeah, originally, so we had an allocation associated with Angel of Shavonah, but um once they um went away, the county kind of said, let's keep that allocation in the budget. Um, the different municipalities and basically we can use those for um free recycling day events, electronic recycling events, toxic or hazardous, you know, special events and that money would be available for those uh type of things. We haven't gotten a request from the county this year for that money. I saw Philip kind of notice him a little bit, said, hey, are we gonna do something this year? Or do we need it next year? So it, there's potential it just goes away.
And, and the county did receive that EPA grant for the landfill enhancements. I, you know, we're still waiting to understand, are there expectations on the municipalities participating in that or no? So.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see something really happen with recycling, because personally I have to find places to bring my recycling and it's difficult. And I think we should, personally, I think we should require every there be recycling at every spot. There's other cities and municipalities that require recycling along with trash, so if that's something that we can pay into, I think that'd be cool, but I think that's a bigger conversation than just us, so.
You know, um, at a recent meeting, uh, that the deputy administrator for um, the county was talking about how their hope is that they would be able to do the drop offs again within that, with that grant. I know they had it, we're still work two things, but I know that is something they were pressing for, at least in conversation and when lots of things have to happen first, but I know that's something that's front of, front of mind, because it was so helpful. But she had mentioned that, like I said, that's just the hope, but just to add to it is.
Yeah, I've lived in places where recycling was super easy and it was at every house and then I lived in places where I had to drive two hours to recycle. So this is, this is somewhere in between right now. On page eighty-three, you have just, those are just highlights. Those numbers are included in the subsequent pages.
So you've got um, get it back there.
General Fund Request Title Cemetery Fence Arizona Street Trail. But for example, all those projects, that's just a highlight. Those numbers are embedded elsewhere.
Correct.
Sorry to nitpick. But quick question. So for example, the cemetery fence is um thirty-nine thousand. And if I go to page eighty-five, uh, page eighty-five, twenty twenty-four budget for cemeteries, twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah, that, that's uh the one you're looking at on page eighty-five is an operating.
Okay.
Department. Um, it's a good question, good question. So that is the operating cost that Sean's team has loaded for maintaining the cemetery. What you're seeing on page eighty-three is a capital project. I don't have in the detail, I don't have the capital uh fund broken out in detail by account.
Okay.
So you, you'll need to look at page eighty-three as a summary of, of capital projects. The uh for general fund, that's what you look at page eighty-three. The funds up above for water, airport, street, those numbers are included in those fund details that you see in the, you know, back pages. The reason I don't do that at this stage is there's so many puts and takes on the capital project. I'm not gonna create the capital fund details whole right at the end.
Gotcha. Okay, so this is just kind of a summary.
A summary.
Yes, so then the follow-up question, you know, we, I mentioned this to Joel earlier, you know, we, we really get one, one chance to grow well. Are, do we have budgets in place for the comp plan effort and some water master planning?
Yes.
And so what are those, are those budget amounts shown yet for the individual efforts?
So comp plan um is considered an operating cost. So if you look under planning on page uh, where is it to? Yeah, we'll look at that in a second. So. Where are you, Joel? Where's planning? Okay, page one oh five.
Yeah.
This is the operating for planning. You'll, you'll see comp plan as a revenue. Um, one hundred thousand. And then down below, uh, comp plan is included in professional fees and outside.
It is, okay.
So it is in there.
It is, okay.
So comp plan is in there and then on the water side, we. What did we have? I forget. Fifty thousand for additional.
Water master.
Source water, yeah. So Sean had conservation planning, twenty-five thousand and source water protection district hydraulic evaluation for twenty-five thousand. On the water fund.
And some of the other planning efforts that we at least want to discuss are some of how we incorporate the offsets into our water portfolio. Now, so that would be some sort of a water rights planning that get a framework for how those may come in and what percentage of our portfolio they might occupy. And then also looking at some infrastructure planning. If we're gonna be doing more of these developments, we need to plan for what size water lines, where do they need to go, know where, how we're gonna loop. You know, those are, th- those are my my mantra about we get one chance to play, we get one chance to grow well, you know, and so it involves planning well.
So those types of things, if they're not defined as a project, um professional fees and outside services under water, uh, plus any engineering and that water has its own engineer, so engineering budget. So it would, it would be covered under those buckets. But it would kind of be up to Sean to determine are those buckets full enough?
Yeah, those are, those are big ticket planning costs.
Yeah, I don't know what those are. Yeah, I don't know. And no clue what that would be.
Yeah, I agree. Um, one thing, you know, that I lean on too is like, you know, a good example is, you know, looking at the top side presentation, you know, and that's the first thing that I went to is like the hydraulic modeling that we have on a tarot. I mean, that, that would be occurred, I mean, like that evaluation would be provided to the town by the development. So the modeling would be provided as, as their efforts to get, is our water main big enough to actually do this? What other?
What other projects do we anticipate?
Looping occurring. Um, so that's kind of how I see that. I, I do think I'm with you. Um, I backed off a little bit on, on some of the water stuff, just to try to focus on, you know, well, three, well, four watering, um infiltration gallery, you know, um water plant expansion and stuff like that. But I, I would say like, yeah, I think there's some, there's sort of strategic planning definitely needed. Um, big time coming our way for distribution system lines that, you know, aren't necessarily associated to development, that they're associated to, you know, they were put in nineteen forty-eight. Those are things that I'm trying, you know, I did put a good five-year plan together for water, because I feel like I've been in that and I'm but I do have some, tried to move into stormwater, but I'm also talking with Al and Lightwater and RG to some extent on how to strategize moving forward with that. But I didn't, I didn't put.
We need the picture on the top, on the front of the box of the puzzle, so that we know where the pieces go. And right now, we're just dealing with pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, I definitely, definitely felt pretty pretty good about, you know, some of the processes that we've been in. I mean, we did a, uh, when Crossman came in, we did a hydraulic model to see, you know, how, how, how will this work? And, you know, it, it was specific to of the infrastructure that's there and the elevations, you know, fire flow, fire cuffs, PSIs, how many, you know, SFEs are we talking about? And, and we provided that in-house for that specific. But overall, looking at transmission lines, we nipped.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to keep time up.
Yeah.
This time, I think some of those efforts are reactive rather than a proactive big picture. And this is where things need to go.
Yeah.
We can, chat more about it later.
So um, can we uh move on to setting the meeting dates for a public hearing uh in regard to the budget? And um there are four dates that we need to consider.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Uh, yes, you may.
I'll make a motion to set the twenty twenty-four budget public hearing dates for the following regular meetings. Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
So we have uh Row and McCretzy. And uh all in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, the dates are set. Thank you. Um, and as uh Philip was saying, he'll invite us to look at ClearGov. Um, within that uh program, you can send messages to him asking about particular line items and he can answer you back or he can forward it to the department head, um however he chooses to handle that. Um, and if you don't wanna do it directly through that program, you can send a message separately um through uh email. So hopefully we can get some of our individual questions um answered by you in that process. Okay, good. Um, thank you. We're off to a great start, I think. So now we will move to trustee interaction. Um, I'd like to say that um, you know, I went to this one program about, about recycling and um there's a change in the law about um trying to make the um people who are, who are who are making the packaging, make them pay for the cost of recycling. So then there are these surveys that have been sent out. They want just one person from a town to respond to the survey. And I know that there are gonna be some questions that we can't answer. Um, really in terms of the volume that we're sending out or how much we're paying to each individual company. They don't, you know, like if like a Chaffey County Waste, they don't separate, um, they don't separate the trash that they pick up, you know, in the town uh versus out of the town. Um, so somebody needs to answer this survey though. And I thought I could take a stab at it, it, unless somebody else wants to volunteer. So that's a question for you.
Stab away.
All right. And there are gonna be some places where I just have to say, I don't know, you know? And they, and they said that's okay, because there's apparently a lot of other information that they can get from your answers. Okay, um, also I did a, a fun program this week at Darren Patterson um Christian Academy and um it was for the middle schoolers and uh was Jenny Depew's design of a, of a program and she just did a great job. She was, used to work for the town. Now she's teaching there. So she wanted to teach the kids about town governance. So she asked me to come. I was the mayor, of course, and then I had six uh trustees who were all sixth, seventh or eighth graders. And then she divided all the um, the other children into groups of five, five groups of five. Each of them had to present um something that they wanted to have the town do, like uh have a trail all around the town, like the Mineral Belt Trail or build a swimming pool or put an absolute limit on the number of houses that we could build. And, and so each, each little group had a couple of spokespeople who came up and gave their spiel. And then the trustees had to argue about it. And I told them I didn't want any tie votes, but I got three ties. So I had to break the ties. But anyway, it was really fun to do it and hopefully they learned something. So she did it, she did a great job designing it. Um, so um, one other thing is that the Chaffey Housing Authority would still like to have a person from Bena Vista um apply to them to be on their board. And um, I don't know if any of you are ready to do that, but they would like it. So that's it for me. Uh Gina?
I don't have anything on.
Okay. Devin?
Good.
Sean?
Yeah, I guess you gotta, um, I was wasting one thing. Um. Um, I think I brought this up maybe a few meetings ago and it had to do with a question a business owner had on West Main Street. And, you know, and it's, it's not anything I really wanna like, you know, get maybe more direction on, but I just wanted to, it's a good time, everybody's in the room, um, Brian, Philip, Joel, three pretty heavy hitters there that have a lot of experience and have spent a lot of time dealing with situations and watching a community grow and looking at how things are growing. But um, you know, that, that block between um Godison Avenue, San Juan, it's the old mortuary side building right there. And it's kind of turned into this kind of like plaza, right? There's several different shops there. Uh, it's not a mortuary anymore, but I think there's um a full circle realities there. There's a couple of other businesses in there, maybe another building that's vacant. Uh, anyway, the, the property owner approached me a while back and wanted to know about like strategizing, you know, better parking in that area. Wanted to look at like downtown Main Street to, you know, see if, you know, we could maybe do some angle parking on West Main Street. And, you know, there's obviously, you know, speed limit changes and, you know, West Main Street's a little different than downtown, right? I mean, it's totally different vibe. Things move slower down there. The street's actually designed for that concept, right? Now, we actually pick up the snow from gutter to gutter when it snows and nobody parks there at night. And so we can do that kind of stuff. Uh, fifteen, fifteen, fifty miles per hour versus probably twenty-five, right, on West Main Street? So anyways, but I, but I, you know, I probably um wanna, you know, just talk about like, since Joel's here, like, you know, we see West Main Street, you know, the way the comp plan is, the way we're growing, seeing anything different happening there. I don't wanna like, you know, kind of, you know, Andrew brings up some good points when we talk about water, looking at water in a silo, that's not a good strategy. It's kind of, you know, similar to that, right? So um, but mostly on that block. Anyway, the, the, the property approach, we wanted to know of about angle parking, you know, instead of parallel parking or non-conform parking, because nothing's really identified there. You can kind of park however you want. Uh, there's bike lane, there's a sidewalk. The angle parking definitely impacts the bike lane. So if somebody. So if somebody wanted to get approved for angle parking, you know, the eye test for me, I even drove through with Gary Well. Because he's like, yeah, it's probably not safe. It's probably not safe backing out into a bike lane that maybe you can't even fit in. You probably can't fit in, but I mean, just bringing it up. Um, I, I think, you know, Brian and I had a email conversation. Because same individual reached out to Brian to, to know where I was at with this, you know, those are the things, but I. I think I could, you know, probably help strategize some parking on the side streets or that could be probably accommodated better, but. Uh, just letting you know, I think those things, those questions might come, you know, in the future because they're coming to staff. You know, and, and I want to say I didn't work. Not without a different design, not without a different probably layout of the site. Based on that. And then the, you know, the other thing is that I don't feel like. It's in our community's best interest to remove a bike lane for one block and that, you know, and, you know, we paid for that and we worked hard for that. So those are things that are important to our community, you know, reach out to the Trails Board, you know, give feedback. But I, I just bring it up because it's, you know, it's things that are coming before we're looking at. Um, you know, I mean, we're kind of growing out away from Main Street a little bit and. You know, some questions and good questions, but also, you know, safety minded, um, you know, traffic safety. Um, street design, engineering, all that goes into it. Uh, anyways, I just kind of felt compelled to share it with everybody.
But they have parking at their building?
Yeah, we do. I, I think there's just the need for more parking in that. That kind of, you know, it's a half a block is what it is. You know, it's quarter wide. I mean, I could definitely help strategize and, you know, look at the side street parking opportunities there. Maybe cut down some trees, I'm joking. But, but, but I, but I get it, you know, I, I get it. I can, I can definitely connect with the questions. I can definitely, you know, it's, it's hard to, you know. Convince somebody and perspective is a funny thing, you know, it's, it's not like downtown. It's not like South Main, it's West Main.
Thank you. Chief?
Nothing, thanks.
Hello, nothing. Okay. Uh, Andrew?
Nothing.
Cindy?
I think I'm good.
Okay, Joel?
Hey, I just want to touch base. Peter, uh, trustee Hilding, uh, emailed about. Um, some Colorado clean energy funds and fading west pursuing. Getting some of those funds for their carbonate street project. He was just wondering about that if, if. What we know about that. And, um, so fading west is pursuing some, some funds which should help with, um. With some heaters, water heaters, heat pumps and that, that sort of thing. Um, hopefully they're successful. Whether or not that will affect. The residents over the costs, uh, most likely not. I think that the financing, it sounds like the financing is. Tight enough that, um, this is going to all go to helping alleviate some of that. So that we can have affordability targets that they're looking for, for the carbon street. So. Um, I imagine a lot of these sort of funding opportunities. Will go contribute to the actual financing of the project as, as proposed.
And having them might, uh, make the cost of living less once somebody's in there.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So, um. Affecting affordability, ongoing affordability as opposed to just the actual renting. So I wanted to touch base because he asked that question. And I'll keep, I'll keep looking around, Peter, but hopefully that, um, provides some answer to you. We'll keep looking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
We'll keep poking around, but, um. That's what we found so far.
Peter, since you're up there with a yellow box, why don't you go ahead and tell us if you've got things on your mind?
I mean, plenty of things in my mind, but I don't know about for here. Yeah, no, I think touching on that, my understanding, I, I was speaking with somebody at the. Green Energy Fund and they're partnering it looks like with Sangre, which is exciting so that possibly there could be some, um. Tariff, uh, tariff shared financing. So basically it's financing for. Efficiency improvements, which includes hopefully insulation. I don't know the extent to the, to the project, but. Basically it, it goes to the meter, uh, and the home itself, not to the homeowner. So you're not taking out a personal loan. It, it kind of evens out across like a thirty year financing. Um, and it sounds like they're going to do a test pilot, uh, with Sangre, which would be exciting, uh, for us. Uh, but there, it also sounded like they were going to do that for targeted, which would be, you know. Kind of front ending the cost for a lot of that equipment and everything, uh, then financed over a long period of time. So. Uh, it allows them to keep the affordability, um, levels at where they're at, but that's great too. I just didn't know if it was also going to open up some funds possibly for some more affordability. But again, it's kind of exciting to have that, uh, uh, I don't know if they, I don't know if they've announced yet. And I think it might be in a couple of months and I just. Said it in the public meeting, but, um, uh, we'll see how that goes. It'd be great if it actually happens. But does it on that, uh, well, not exactly on that, but. I did have a question says, working on a project recently with the Marshall fires and. I just, Joel, I guess this is a question for you or anyone else. Have we done kind of a deep dive? Like looking internally and not just on, uh, Sangre or anything out like that on our conversations about. Fire protections, but looking at our own building codes. Cause I know with the Marshall fires, they found out one of the bigger. contributors to the fire were the, um, like wooden fences in between kind of more condensed housings. There are housing, uh, and so I just didn't know if we've kind of done a audit of our building codes and other areas to. Um, look at ways that we can mitigate for fire risks, uh, in town. And I know that we have. Uh, fire department here as well, so they might feel it, it's that even better, but I saw it bring it up since I was working on a Marshall, uh. Fire project recently.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of conversations internally, but maybe the fire department gets involved.
Um, so. The building department is looking to do all the twenty twenty one, um, international code. Um, which includes the fire code. They are also looking to adopt the twenty twenty one WUI code, which is the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Um, which is something this county has never adopted, which addresses what you're discussing. Um, with regards to, um, fencing, decking, roofing, windows. All the things. Um, it's. It's something the county has never done because it, there's, it's a very small book. But it's been viewed in other communities as restrictive. Um, there's requirements with regards to vegetation plans in there. Um, so. Pat and his team are. Looking at how they can implement it. Um, the county has a land use code that addresses some of those items. But they have never addressed it to the extent that the Wildland Urban Interface Code goes to. Um, this would be a code that would be presented with the packet to the, um. To the trustees for approval and implementation at the board. Um, as we've never had it, I am not internally familiar with it. I had to order it myself and I'm reading through it now. Um, but it's definitely. It has a lot of points, a lot of, and I think a lot of why the county is looking to adopt the WUI code is as a result of. The larger fires, um, the Marshall fire, some of these other things that have happened in Colorado as well as the, the landscape. Of the area that we live in. Um, the building is happening in unincorporated G D county outside of the municipalities. And the forest health that is around us. Um, and I think they're receiving, um, some pressure from constituents. Um, to look at adopting sections of the movie. It will be, um. Edited. Um, they're having several meetings about it. At least you can look on the, the county's website to see. That particular portion of the WUI code that they're looking to amend and what the amendments are that the county is proposing. Um, and the changes that are associated with that, so.
I do, I do think the, uh, county that WUI is not, the idea is not to. Present it to the trustees for adoption in town though. So we could pick and choose some of it. Um, we can talk to Pat Green, he's going to come November fourteenth, we can ask him about that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sue from New York, New York. Would you like to comment?
Couple things. Uh, Phillip, I, I didn't unmute myself, uh, quickly enough to thank you for your budget presentation. I really appreciate. All the work that you and your, your team have put into that. It's, um, it's a lot to chew on, but really, really helpful. And then also Libby, I, uh, would be happy after you take a stab at that recycling question there to. Um, to review it if you want, uh, with you. I've got some, some background in that area.
Thank you. Great. Okay, Phillip. Devin, Brian?
Nothing pressing.
All right, good to have you.
Good to be here.
All right, good. So, um, I think we are done with that. Let me let up to anyone else. I don't know what X, uh, information only means on the.
That's mine. Um, you see in the packet, there's a couple of letters. There's one from, I think. Uh, Congress or Senate representative saying good job, TV. Uh, there's some information as far as from the judge, um, kind of. Sounds like a lot of municipalities are doing this same statement. Um, what it is is information only, uh, just basically. A small section of the agenda and a small section of the packet that allows staff to just relay some of that information.
Good.
Thought it was worthwhile they included this. Um, yeah, you get information from. Um, housing authority if they got an update that they don't need to come here and present, their report can go in there, building department, that kind of thing.
Okay, um, we are ready then to go into an executive session.
Mayor? Did you want to, just hope we're here to. Do you want to do that public comment?
Yeah, that's right. We were going to talk about that. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, the maker space, yeah. So you're off to a good start working with the, um. Community Foundation. They're essentially going to help you with the five oh one C three, right? And you can go ahead and start getting, uh, contributions as well. So, um. Yeah, um. Are there things that you need from us? Or are you just telling us about your?
Not right now, just giving you kind of that heads up of, of, again, we might, um, be coming later on. We would like closer to town. Um, we have our eye on a few buildings. We've reached out to. Had some initial discussions with her about some of the buildings. Um. If there's, I think I, I'm not even sure who to reach out to. If there's vacant buildings closer to town. That we might be able to use, I'm sure you just have them sitting around. So, you know, if that's the case, let us know. Um, we're also going to reach out to, um, definitely, um, since he just retired and ask about that building. So, um, I think that's about it. Um, again, we probably will. You know, if we, if you guys see the value, then we'll probably come back and ask for a little bit of funding and more so. If we get a little bit of funding, it means that our town government has faith in us and sees the value. And what that does is it really supercharges our grant, right? So we can go out and get more grant funding. If they see that you guys have actually, um, put some funds and, you know, backed us. So that's kind of what we'll be looking at. Um, but we're not asking for that until we can show that we're pretty successful, so.
Yeah, well, it would, it would be good for you to apply through the Chaffey County Community Foundation.
It'll do that.
Part of that sixty one thousand dollars that we put aside each year. Um, you may not get it. That's just a brand new startup organization, but at least you get the experience and you get in there. Um, you know, it's, it's a, a good process. Sue has been one of the, uh. Evaluators on it and I have as well. Um, so it's, it's a well organized process.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. And if you guys have other ideas of how maybe a maker space could serve this community. Please reach out to us and let us know. Um, you know, again, we'll probably just focus on woodworking and welding and. An open space to begin with. And then we'll just keep on asking, you know, if we have extra funds, what do you guys want next? You know? We talked about having, um. You know, there's a couple of different, what we are starting to work with Heather in the chamber to try to. Kind of ask around from the business community to figure out what the needs are. If there's like, I'll just give you an example. If there's three van conversions. Right? And they, none of them can afford like a big piece of equipment, like maybe a big CNC router. Like each of them can't afford it on their own. Then we can, you know, they can donate some of that money. And we can, they can use it as a tax write-off. We could house that piece of equipment. And then guarantee them X amount of time on that. And that way, you know, maybe they can only do one van conversion a month, but. If they have that access to that piece of equipment, they can do three, right? So it's a boon for you guys too, for everyone coming in. How do we help our businesses, right? So if you have other ideas kind of like that, let us know.
Uh, yeah, Andrew's question.
Is this a, a novel idea of you guys or are you modeling this off of something you've seen been, be successful elsewhere?
There's a lot of different models for maker spaces. Um, there's quite a few in Colorado. They're actually nested within libraries. So it's, that, that is one of the models is that it's the future of libraries. It's this lending model or. Or community creation space for members to come in and learn new technology. Um, there's also like the Erie Maker Space, which has been funded by their community. Um, they've been given land, um, and also funding from the, the government. Um, there's a bunch of different models that we've been looking at. So. We have a, we've been working on this for probably like around two years now and. We have a steering committee that meets and helps us and we have quite a few people that have been part of maker spaces. That are kind of giving us, this is what works the best for our maker space, right? Michael Hannigan, who helped create the one out in Springs, has been a great resource for us too.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there with us.
It was interesting to watch.
Okay, so, um, we're going to do an executive session and, uh, we'll do the lead into it. And then take a seven minute break. Okay, um, I'm going to want somebody to make this motion and they can, uh, do so by just saying, I so move. And I'm going to read the motion first. I move that the Board of Trustees enter into executive session. Um, and this will be to, uh, determine positions. Relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators. Pursue it to Colorado Revised Statute, Section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four E. And to receive legal advice on specific legal questions. Pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute, Section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four B. Regarding potential annexation of certain property into town. Um, so I'd like for someone to say that they make that motion and I'd like to have a second.
I so move.
So good.
Okay, good. We have Lecretzi and Row. And, um, all in favor of going into this executive session, say aye. Is anyone opposed? Um, so the motion passes by the two thirds majority required. And we will take a seven minute break zoom at when that clock says nine twenty.